To the order, and ask for a roll call of the members.
Ann Brinkman is absent. Alan Buchnam.
Present.
Mark Dietrich is absent. John Dwyer.
Here.
Dean Goke.
Here.
Dick Matthews.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
And Steve Timms is absent.
The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would accept a motion to approve the order of the agenda.
No move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
I would accept a motion for the approval of the minutes for the July 15 meeting.
I move to approve the minutes for the July 15 meeting.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. I call for the vote.
And that motion passes with Commissioner Goke abstaining.
Thank you. This is the part of the agenda where any person can come and speak on any item that is not on the agenda. Is everybody here to speak on an item that's on the agenda?
Yes.
There does not seem to be any members of the public to speak on that, so we will go right into public hearing. I hereby open case number ZO A 0907 and ordinance amending Chapter 26 concerning the creation of mixed-use zoning districts. And ask for staff report.
Good evening. I'm here to give the staff report regarding the proposed ordinance to create mixed-use zone districts. I'd like to enter into the record the draft ordinance and the staff report, the contents of this digital presentation, as well as a letter that you all have copies of before you from Wheat Ridge 2020. This comes from the Board of Directors of Wheat Ridge 2020. The intent of the letter is to express their support for the proposed ordinance. Generally, Wheat Ridge 2020 is in favor of the proposed new mixed-use zoning because they think it's an important step in revising the city's regulations to promote redevelopment on some of the priority commercial corridors in the city, and it supports their own strategic plan as well as the neighborhood revitalization strategy that was adopted in 2005. And I'd also like to document that the public noticing requirements for this public hearing have been met. So for the presentation tonight, I'm going to give a quick background on kind of the impetus for the new mixed-use zoning, review the process that staff went through drafting the code, give an overview of some of the more important content items in the proposed new ordinance, as well as summarize some of the simultaneous amendments to the existing zoning code that are packaged with this new code so that it all works together. So in terms of the background and why we see this mixed-use zoning as an important step for Wheat Ridge, we have a lot of plans that identify quality mixed-use development as the type of redevelopment that we'd like to see for many of our major commercial corridors, commercial centers. That includes our comprehensive plan envisioned Wheat Ridge, which was recently updated in 2009, the neighborhood revitalization study that was adopted in 2005, as well as some of our more geographic-specific sub-area plans. We have a sub-area plan for what's called the Northwest Subarea, which is the future transit-oriented development near the Ward Road commuter rail station, as well as the Wadsworth Corridor Subarea Plan. They all call for higher-density walkable mixed-use development. Despite the vision for attracting this type of development to Wheat Ridge, our existing zoning code can actually make it pretty difficult to achieve mixed-use, more walkable and compact, denser development. A large part of that is because our zoning code is similar to a lot of jurisdictions in that it was based on kind of a post-World War II model where you separate land uses, have high parking requirements, and it's very focused on development standards and separating land uses, not as focused on allowing for a mix of uses. And also, there's very little in traditional zoning code that addresses building form and architectural quality. We do have some allowances for mixed-use development in the existing code. Our commercial districts allow for a small amount of residential to be combined with a commercial project, but there's some pretty strict restrictions on how much residential there can be, where it can be located, high parking ratios for it that makes it difficult to do, as well as the fact that for most large sites, we require a planned development. So anything over an acre, if you wanted to do mixed use, you'd have to go through the planned development process and do what we call a PMUD or a planned mixed-use development, which is very timely. It requires going through two public hearings. It's a pretty unpredictable process, and that's to secure the zoning. And even after that's complete, you still have to do a separate site plan review that documents a very specific site plan that is not flexible and can be difficult to maintain in the long run, especially as a property evolves and might want to redevelop. So given those constraints, what we're hoping to do with these new mixed-use zone districts are create straight zone districts, similar to a straight commercial zone, for example, where as long as you're meeting the regulations that are within that district, you can go through it primarily administrative review. We really think it's important to streamline the development review process and make clear and predictable rules and processes so that we can try and stimulate development. We also try and have a flexible approach to land uses and parking requirements, and we're also look, the new ordinance incorporates a lot of design standards. It's what you might call form-based code in that it tries to really focus on how site design and building design is an important element of the public realm and how regardless of the use of the building, sometimes you really need those standards to create the kind of quality places we're hoping these mixed-use districts will encourage. And we really do hope that this new zoning can be one part of a kind of a bigger goal of the city for economic development and bringing in new development to the city. Right now, what's before you tonight is just adopting a new ordinance, but it is something that City Council is considering moving forward after we hopefully have the new mixed-use code in place to look at rezoning some target areas in the city again as a way to hopefully help stimulate redevelopment in those areas. So that was an overview of kind of the background thinking and intent of the code, and now I'll give a quick summary of the process that we went through. A lot of this should sound pretty familiar to the commissioners. We tried to get input from a lot of stakeholders, and one of the most important of those was property owners in the target areas where we're hoping the mixed-use zoning might be implemented. And that includes Wadsworth between 38th and 44th, Kipling north of 44th, the future TOD area at the Ward Road Station, as well as 38th Avenue between Sheridan and Wadsworth. So starting in January 2010, we had meetings specific to each of those geographic areas where we invited all property owners on the corridor and told them what we were hoping to do with the new mixed-use code and sought a lot of input. We had discussions at the meeting, and we also distributed surveys at each of the meetings that people were able to fill out and give us their input on issues such as what scale of development they thought was appropriate, how to treat some auto-oriented uses, and some topics such as those. We also had a technical task force. This was eight-member committee of primarily end-users of the code. It included designers and developers, a couple of property owners that are actually in these target mixed-use areas, and as well as developers and real estate brokers who have a lot of experience with mixed-use projects in the metro area. So they were able to give us some pretty valuable input on how to balance kind of the market side in particular with our vision for mixed use in these areas. We also tried to get public input from the city at large, not just from property owners in the target areas. The main vehicle that we were able to do that through was the website dedicated just to the project. We were lucky enough to get some funding from Livwell Wheat Ridge to be able to have this website, which was interactive. We had surveys. Anybody could come and take. We had about 18 people complete the survey online. We also had a photo journal where people could come and comment on photos or post their own to kind of have a dialogue about what types of development people might like to see in Wheat Ridge. And we put drafts of the code as they were available on the website. We also had a citywide open house in May, which was fairly well-attended. We had over 30 people, and it did include a fair number of residents that are not in the targeted mixed-use areas, actually on the corridors, but that live in residential neighborhoods close to them. And we got a lot of great feedback that night about how to deal with transitions and buffering to the existing residential neighborhoods that are important to protect. And then, of course, we also had study sessions with Planning Commission throughout the first half of 2010 to get feedback and share what we were learning from our task force and from the public comments, as well as two city council study sessions. Now I'll do an overview of the code. I'm trying to highlight kind of the main content areas that we think are most important, and obviously, I'm happy to answer questions at the end if I don't touch on something that you're interested in. So we have two primary districts, and one is called Mixed Use Commercial or MUC. This is really envisioned more for higher-intensity development with probably a greater amount of commercial or retail use. We envision it fitting for some of our major commercial corridors, like a Wadsworth or a Kipling. Within the context of the higher-intensity development, there were two sub-districts that generally fit mixed-use commercial but are areas that have some unique characteristics that we thought for a couple of standards like parking, signage, and allowable uses had some of their unique considerations, and we've addressed them through what we're calling sub-districts. So one is MUC Transit-Oriented Development, and that would be for the area around the future commuter rail station. And the other is called MUC Interstate, which is designed for properties that are on a major commercial corridor, such as Kipling, and are also within approximately 500 feet of I-70. And the other major district is Mixed Use Neighborhood or MUN. This is a little lower-intensity, smaller-scale development is what we're imagining and see it more of a Main Street kind of character. To that end, we're hoping it'll be, really promote walkability so there's a little more limited range of auto-oriented uses allowed. The standards for Build 2 are a little stricter. We're really trying to bring buildings up to the street like a traditional Main Street. And as I mentioned, it's lower intensity. It is envisioned for areas of the city that were not exempted from the height and density limits in the city charter, so it would be completely in line with those existing restrictions. The next topic I'll cover is building height. The approach of the code is to really regulate density and intensity of development through a combination of height limits, open space requirements, and step-back and setback requirements. So building height, we think, is one of the most important ones, and we spent a lot of time surveying people at the open house, the forums, and via the website on this topic. So the approach was in the higher-intensity areas or the mixed-use commercial areas to try and promote a higher level of density, particularly near the highway where we think it's more appropriate to have taller buildings, and at the future transit-oriented development because a key component of TOD is to have higher density and support transit ridership. We also are trying to incentivize mixed-use development and tried to work on a couple of big incentives in the code by getting feedback from property owners and the task force. And one of the big ones we have is there is a two-story height bonus in any of the mixed-use, or mixed-use commercial MUC areas if you provide a mixed-use development. We also require a 10-foot step-back for any portion of building that's over 75 feet in height. We just think it's important, if buildings actually are getting that tall, to step back a little bit and provide sunlight and prevent a canyon feel on a corridor. And we also have a four-story maximum for any portion of a building that was, be within 100 feet of a low-density residential unless it's separated by a arterial or collector. And this table just summarizes what the maximum heights are. Generally, for mixed-use commercial, we're looking at four to six stories, depending on whether it's a single or mixed-use building, and then higher intensity going all the way up to eight for the interstate and TOD sub-districts. And as I mentioned, the mixed-use neighborhood would stick with the existing city charter height restrictions, which is 35 feet for any building that has residential use, and 50 feet maximum for all other buildings. Another important topic, residential transitions. As I mentioned, we got a lot of feedback on this when we did some outreach to adjacent homeowners. And one of the components that we've incorporated into the code is for any parking lot or drive-through that's adjacent, shares a property line with the existing residentially-zoned lot, there is a requirement to have a six-foot-wide landscape buffer as well as a six-foot-tall screen wall. And then in terms of separations between new buildings and existing residential uses, the language is actually for properties that are zoned residentially or agriculturally and that have an existing single or two-family residential use. In those cases, the following standards would apply. At the ground level, you'd have a required step-back of at least 10 feet for a building that's one to two stories in height. It would need to be 15 feet for a three-story building, and up to 20 feet or more for a four-story building and above. And we do require that not only is there a step-back there, but that it's landscaped with trees to provide an actual buffer. And then we also have an additional five-foot-per-story, upper-level step-back, starting at the second story. So it's five foot per story until you get to the fourth story. And as I mentioned earlier, the provision to have a maximum of 100 feet, or a maximum of four stories in height within 100 feet of a residential use unless there is an arterial or collector road separating the residential use from the new mixed-use development. Auto-oriented uses, this was a really important topic to us because we have a lot of the corridors where we're targeting the new mixed-use zoning. Already have a lot of auto-existing uses that are either sales and repair of auto or just geared toward the automobile because they're drive-through uses. So we wanted a way to kind of respect those existing uses, but also recognize the vision that's in a lot of our plans for creating more walkable and just balanced multimodal developments where, in addition to the auto, bikes, peds, and transit can fit in as well. So the approach that's in the ordinance before you is to allow most auto uses as a conditional use, which is an administrative-only review. And the intent of that really is to give staff the opportunity to do some extra site plan review and working with the applicant on how some of these uses can be designed so that they're still integrated into what we hope will become more pedestrian-friendly areas. Any use that exists today and becomes conditional would be considered a legal-conforming use. It would not become nonconforming. If it wanted to expand, it would have to go through the conditional use permit process to get any larger, but again, that's an administrative review, and it's more just focused on the design. Another approach we've taken to kind of help minimize the impact of auto-oriented uses in some of these areas are to establish separation requirements for some of the more prevalent uses. So we have a 1,000-foot separation requirement for gas stations and 500-foot for drive-through uses. And those separation requirements, first of all, they do not apply in the mixed-use commercial interstate sub-district. They do not apply to existing uses. So if you have a drive-through today and there's another drive-through that's closer than 500 feet from you, but you want to redevelop and scrape it and build a new drive-through that's an improvement, you would be able to do that because you are in existing use. And we also have an exemption from the separation requirements for large mixed-use development with a concept plan on file. And the intent there was that, we heard, especially from our task force, that a lot of mixed-use developments do incorporate a drive-through bank or a drive-through restaurant as part of the development. It's oftentimes one of those pads for a drive-through retail use is a key financial component for the deal. So we felt that if you're providing a quality mixed-use development and drive-through's component of it, that that would be, so meets the intent of the ordinance. So we're exempting those master-plan sites that incorporate mixed use from the separation requirements. And this is a table that just kind of summarizes what some of the major auto-oriented uses are and how they're dealt with in the code. Again, conditional use almost across the board with a lot of permitted uses in the interstate district, recognizing that when you're right by a highway interchange, it's more appropriate to have the auto-oriented uses. Another important topic is the review process. As I've mentioned, one of the major goals with this code is to establish a more predictable and timely development review so that although you'd have to go through a public hearing to be rezoned to these new districts, once the zoning is in place, you can go through an administrative review. We have an existing process in the code called Site Plan Review, and we would propose to use that process for most sites. However, sites that are 10 acres or larger, we think require a little more review and consideration. So the proposal is that those sites would require a concept plan that would show basic circulation, proposed building pads and land uses throughout the site, and give staff a chance to weigh in on all those topics. And then as site plans come in for that larger development, they would be checked against the concept plan. For the larger sites, we also thought it was important to include the opportunity for public input. So right now, the proposed ordinance does include a required neighborhood meeting prior to submitting the concept plan to give neighbors within a 600-foot radius the opportunity to learn about the development and give their input upfront. And then after the concept plan is submitted by the applicant, there would be a 15-day public comment period where a sign would be posted on the site, and anyone within 300 feet would receive a letter notifying them that if they want to come to City Hall, they can actually look at the plans on file and submit written comments with suggestions or concerns about the proposal. And a final important topic that certainly came up as we were doing outreach with some of the existing business and property owners was how to treat nonconforming properties. We heard loud and clear that, especially if there's the potential that there could be some city-initiated rezonings, that we needed to be flexible in our approach to any uses or buildings that could become nonconforming. So we've taken a very flexible approach in our research of several jurisdictions, multiple jurisdictions in the metro area and a few outside of the state. I haven't found any that actually allow a nonconforming use to expand, but we are proposing that nonconforming uses could not only remain indefinitely but could also expand up to 25% for structures. So if your use is fine, but you have something related to the building or site design that doesn't match the new code, you would be allowed to expand as much as you want as long as you don't make the nonconformity any worse. And we are proposing, as part of this ordinance, two changes to how we treat nonconforming properties in our existing code. So this would actually apply to any zone district. One is, right now, the existing code doesn't have any protection for a nonconforming use or building that might be damaged involuntarily by an act of God, and that is a pretty typical provision in a lot of codes. So we're proposing that for any zone district, you would have that protection as a property owner. And the second is, we actually have language right now that if you're a nonconforming use and you're vacant for, completely inactive for three months or more, that you lose your right to resume that use, which we think is a pretty short time period, especially when we're looking at the market as it is today. So we're proposing to extend that to 12 months. And now I'm just going to do a really quick overview of the other amendments we're proposing to existing language in the code that would be adopted simultaneously with this ordinance. One is to do some cleanup and just create consistency with the development review section of the code so that it references the mixed-use processes such as a conditional use permit, and just add some requirements to the site plan process to make sure we get a landscape plan and elevations so that we know whether the proposed development is meeting all the design and form standards that we have in the code. Another, some of the amendments address amending language to clarify that if you do a private rezoning, you do not have to do a planned development if you're rezoning to a mixed-use district. We also have language updating the sign code to reference the mixed-use districts because generally, the sign regulations for commercial districts would apply to the mixed-use districts as well. And we also have proposed language to exclude the planned building group requirements from the mixed-use district. Currently, for any zone district, you're not allowed to have more than one primary building on a lot without going through a PBG. And since we'd really like to see some large-scale redevelopment where you could have, certainly have more than one primary building as part of the same development, we think that we can address any concerns that would come with that through the review, the site plan review, and you don't need an additional review through the PBG. That's the summary, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
The process that you put that through was as extensive a process as I've ever seen, and I have to give special thanks to that mixed-use task force. That was as energetic and knowledgeable a group of people that I've seen volunteer for the city in a long, long time. My one question is, I know that the 38th Avenue Subarea Plan is on the list coming up soon. Is this going to mesh in with that 38th Avenue Subarea Plan?
Yes, that's a great question. That is our intent in a couple of ways. First, we're hoping that the part of the dialogue for the plan might be to identify where it makes sense for this new zoning to go, whether that's corridor-wide or picking some catalyst sites. So we're hoping that through that plan, we can identify areas that the new zoning would make sense. I think also on the table would be, through that plan envisioning for the corridor, if we identify some parts of the MUN district, which is intended- If we identify some parts of the MUN district, which is intended for 38th, that might not quite match or aren't quite working for what we're hearing from the plan, then there is the potential we might come back and make some amendments to the MUN code after the planning process is over so it matches, if that's needed.
Okay, thank you. And this is the part where we hear from the public. If you would like to provide some testimony, please come forward and state your name and spell your last name.
My name is Bill Mahara, and I'm a consultant with Livwell at Wheat Ridge, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight. And I'm also joined by Ted Hyde. Ted is a Wheat Ridge resident and co-facilitator of our ACE Task Force, which is called our Active Community Environment Task Force. We're also joined by Tracy Volkman. She partners with us through Jefferson County Public Health Department and sits on our task force as well. And as I mentioned, it's a pleasure to be here. And we just really want to commend the city and the staff on their efforts with this mixed-use zone process. As you mentioned, we're really impressed with the process and felt it has reached the community. And we have been a partner in this process as well as through funding the website creation for public input. And we'll also be participating with community input sessions for 38th Avenue, which this hopefully will dovetail into this fall. And we've had an opportunity through this process to review the ordinance and really feel it meets the mission of Livwell Wheat Ridge as well as, you know, reducing obesity issues within the community and trying to foster a walkable and more active environment. And the regulations and guidelines within this code really do address those issues. And we just look forward to the approval of this document and for the ultimate development of some mixed-use developments along some of our corridors. And I also want to bring to your attention, we have a copy of the Wheat Ridge transcript that we have a letter into the editor for today's edition, so we'll leave that copy with you. And I believe Ted will make some comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ted Hyde, as Bill said. My last name is spelled H-E-Y-D. As Bill indicated, I am a resident of Wheat Ridge here and have been practicing urban planning for the last 10 years and have been very much enjoying and am very excited about being a part of this process, working directly with Livwell Wheat Ridge and the ACE Task Force. It's been a great pleasure. I too, like Bill, am very excited about what I feel the path the city is on to adopt this change to the zoning ordinance. And I really say that because having practiced urban planning for the last 10 years, I've seen all kinds of developments in all kinds of settings and all kinds of municipalities and jurisdictions. And I just think the city has a great economic, excuse me, great opportunity. And when I say opportunity, I just feel a vitality is really what we're talking about here. And when you drive down certain sections of Wadsworth, for example, and you begin to envision what it could look like, vitality really comes to mind. And certainly, an aspect of that is economic vitality, where you will bring in new development that will contribute to the city's tax base and the city's tax revenues. But certainly, the health aspect and the physical benefits associated with mixed use, I think you've probably all been in sections of the Denver metro area where you see that vital mixed use existing, and people are out walking their dogs with their kids, strollers, enjoying the pocket parks. There's a real physical vitality and energy about such districts, and I think the city has an opportunity to embrace that here. Social interaction, you see it again, kind of like I mentioned. People are interacting with their neighbors and their co-residents, and that's really exciting to see. Environmentally, the idea of whole internal trip capture where people don't have to get in their car to go to every single use that they're intending to arrive at. They can go to the grocery store, they can go to the bank, they can go to the bakery, all within a half-mile walking radius. Environmentally, we all understand that has real benefits. And equity, providing the city's residents with a real mix of housing stock, different types, different levels of affordability, that contributes to equity for the city's residents. I really want to thank you all for listening. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Bruce McLennan. I'm with SEM Architects. I was fortunate enough to be part of the technical task force as we went through the process. We were originally invited. We've done a fair amount of work within Wheat Ridge, and also, we have done a lot of work regionally. I've been a practicing architect for about 30 years. And we've seen these kinds of efforts before in other jurisdictions, and some have been successful and some haven't been as successful. Often, what we see is it's a lot of carrot and stick, and usually, it's a lot more stick than it is carrot. In this case, we were able to bring some input. A bunch of us from the real estate side of things and architectural and design side of things brought some input that truly was incorporated in these drafts. And it's the kind of thing that allows clients that I have to walk into a jurisdiction and say, "There are reasons for me to come here." There are some good incentives and some good reasons to go with the mixed-use process, but there still is the process that you've always had if, in fact, it doesn't fit for every given application. So, I think there's some good flexibility. It is a tough assignment, and staff ought to be given a lot of credit for the way that they've gone through that. Mr. Matthews, I think you were at some of our sessions and had an opportunity to hear some of the dialogue going on. And there was some spirited dialogue through the whole process. There were some things that were working, and there's some things that just weren't working. We were able to bring some of those to light, and I think that by and large, a lot of those things were appropriately addressed, and it was good dialogue. And I think you should be very proud of that process as part of this thing. This kind of a document, the way it's written right now, does incent mixed use without necessarily trying to squash the creativity. And for us, that's a really big thing. It also is the kind of a thing that addresses the needs of the varying districts, and I thought that was a very good way to approach things. We have recognition of different characteristics of different areas of the city and how those, in fact, can be addressed in design and through quality design and the kinds of things that the mixed use offers and incents. And it also, I think more importantly for me, I come from the side, even though I am on the architectural side of things, I come from the side of the market-based kind of an approach. And that's, if I don't do that, my clients don't hire me. They can hire anybody to design, but we bring a little bit of a market presence to those kinds of discussions. This allows for market forces that truly are being addressed in some of the texts that we see. And that was a lot of the discussion that we had on the task force. And I think it was by and large, well-incorporated and well-introduced into the text, and again, you should be proud of that. I think another thing it does is it also addresses pretty reasonably existing uses. People do have concerns about what's going to happen when this gets implemented, and am I going to be automatically behind the eight ball? I'm going to be nonconforming? You're going to make this something where I don't comply anymore. And I think that there's some good language in there that allows for people to actually still function the way that they have been able to function and, in fact, enhance some of the things that they'd like to do. So, we support this. I think it was a good exercise. Again, you should be proud of that exercise, and we think that this kind of a ordinance or a code should be adopted because codifying these things is not an easy task. Now that you've codified something, you know, can you live with it? I think, in fact, you can live with it. In fact, I think it's going to be better if you do go ahead and adopt this.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. Yeah. So, I picked up on the last comment. It pretty reasonably takes care of nonconforming uses. So, I guess that leaves wiggle room as far as you're concerned for what is more reasonable. And I guess I'd like to hear from you what you think is, would be more reasonable.
As far as nonconforming uses?
Yep.
You know, I don't know if there's a more reasonable approach. We did talk about nonconforming in a series of different ways, whether that was uses or structures or whatever. And some of the things that Sarah brought out in her dialogue were part of the kinds of things that we talked about. I mean, the 30-day kind of scenario that's in the code currently, I believe it's in the code currently, you know, we looked at that and we kind of said, you know, what happens if? And that was a lot of what our dialogue was based on is what if? And, you know, you can do that to death, to the point where nothing makes any sense, and all of a sudden, you have nothing that you can deal with. But we tried to do the kinds of things that might actually occur. What happens if something burns down? What happens if, you know, a tornado knocks over a tree and it takes down whatever? You know, those are the kinds of things that could actually occur. And based on that, we did a little bit of giving it the burn test in a series of different applications. And by doing that, we came up with a series of scenarios that said, yeah, you know, this is probably pretty reasonable, without trying to get crazy about it. Because if you get to the point where you try and resolve every single issue or every single scenario, you might not resolve any of them. So, I can't necessarily say that there would be something better. I think this is appropriate, and I thought that it was a fairly well-drafted kind of a way to address some of the concerns, especially from the existing users and neighbors.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? I do have one comment. I would like to thank you for your service on that task force.
You're welcome.
That was a very energetic and spirited group, and I think that that added a lot to the process.
Yeah, I'd agree with you. Thank you.
I guess that closes the public hearing and discussion amongst the council. Dean?
Yeah, I know the real need for a mixed-use plan that will address development in the future for this community. We've had a PMUD. I was on council for eight years and never seen anybody come forward except for one individual with a planned mixed use. That tells me one thing. Well, it tells me a couple of things. We're not ready for a planned mixed use, and we didn't have the right codes in place and the right regulations in place. Do I think these are the right regulations? I think this is a big bite. I think this is a lot of information. I think this is a lot of regulation that until it gets put into practice, I think we're not going to see the pitfalls that it produces. And I think there are some pitfalls as I skim through this, skim through this thing. I don't think it's a bad document at all. Please don't misunderstand me when I say that. I just know from years of experience that you're going to come across those things in this document that, oh, we didn't think of that, or this isn't going to work in this deal. I just hope that staff has that flexibility and interface with the contractors and developers to make an equitable decision. And that comes to the next topic I want to talk about, and those are time delays in the process. Briefly in the presentation, it was brought up that if you apply for this or somebody rebukes this or whatever, there's this time that takes place. Being a developer and being involved in major developments, that's money. And if you want developers to come to this community, which we need dramatically, there are just no two ways about it. We need some planned development in this community. We need to really, really find ways to make this work for them while it works for the city in general. I just can't stress that enough because when they built the Orthopedic Center over on 38th, I went to that groundbreaking over there as a mayor pro tem, and I asked the construction manager, and I says, "What's, what can we do as a city to make this process better?" And he says, "You know what? We really need to know when we're going to be able to dig dirt." And I think that's one of the things that we need to work on in this document and any other documents as a planned use development is when can they dig dirt? Because that's when they realize that they can start making, you know, getting this done and show a bottom line to their deal. And as I was looking at the setbacks next to the neighborhoods, this is much more restrictive than what we have in place right now. I mean, if we have a commercial piece of property in Wheat Ridge, we can build 50 feet on a zero-lot line on a commercial development. Is that correct right now?
No, we do have setback requirements now.
Pardon?
In fact, we do have setback requirements for commercial development from residential, a minimum of 10 feet from an adjacent residential.
And this is much more restrictive than that because this says 20 feet.
And then, there's additional five feet per story.
Exactly.
No, in the existing code, there's an exact, there is for adjacent to commercial.
Yeah, but that's at 10 feet.
Yes, it is true, right.
And then, the setbacks come up. This is 20 feet, and we still got the setbacks in it.
That's true, yeah.
And I have to point out, as a developer, it costs you more for the second floor, it costs you more for the third floor, and it costs you more for the fourth floor. All of a sudden, you're going, oh, you can't build that big. You got to shrink it in, shrink it in, and shrink it in. Well, hold it here. I don't know if I really want to develop here now. I'm just pointing these out as pitfalls in this process. I do understand the impact into residential neighborhoods. Do I think all residential neighborhoods could be impacted as bad as other ones? No. I don't think there's one-size-fits-all, and that's just my point of view. And I think we, as a community, need to have that flexibility to say, you know, we don't have one-size-fits-all. This fits better here or this fits better there. The other thing is, I was a little concerned about, one of the perspectives of this is that it's okay to have an auto, and you can have auto pedestrian-friendly businesses, but they got to be next to the highway. Boy, if I owned a restaurant in the inner portion of Wheat Ridge and I heard that comment, I kind of get queasy in my stomach because, you know, I kind of depend on people showing up in their cars to come and eat at my restaurants or to come to my whatever. Because right now, the way Wheat Ridge is as a community, we don't have those type of densities. And I understand that with the planned use development, we get the higher density residential impact, but how do we transition to that? Does that make sense to anyone here? We have this, these businesses on 38th and 44th that depend upon auto traffic basically to exist, but yet, we're saying we want a pedestrian-friendly environment. And I would agree with that in context as long as we have a good give and take in that deal so we can end up with it. Many discussions were talked about the Wadsworth being a pedestrian-friendly corridor. I think if you go from Chatfield to Broomfield, I don't think it's an, I don't think it's a very good place to walk, people. It's just what it is. It's a major highway in the Denver metro area that runs for an extensive distance. And I think if you go to full distance, you're not going to see a pedestrian-friendly corridor along that. Now, on either side of it, you know, as you have those businesses and mixed-use developments, I guess you can call it that as they may be, you can have it there. And I, we just need to make sure we temper our walkability with that there and not hammer somebody down the future on that.
John, do you have some questions you're writing down?
Well, I guess, first of all, I would like to say just a couple of things about Commissioner Gokis' comments. And one would be, I come down somewhat differently than you do. You were concerned about the restrictiveness of the setbacks on mixed use when you start going vertical. I actually am happy to see slightly larger setbacks. I come from the other side, which is the person who has to live next door to that. And I think part of the reason we get pushback in the city is perhaps because people don't want to see that three-story building that's straight up 10 feet behind their house, and they would rather see, you know, a little more distance, a little more setback. And, you know, it is a balance, you're right, between trying to get good development in here and have neighborhoods that are friendly that can coexist with that. I happen to think that this is a little bit better, but, so we have a little difference there. As far as the driving concerns, I guess I'd just point out that they don't have to use mixed use. They could use a different zoning type and not have to worry about the pedestrian-friendly side of mixed use. My own comment on- My own comment on this is a reiteration of what I've said before, which Sarah gets upset with me about. But I do want to reiterate that, you know, I continue to have concerns about having mixed-use zoning, and one of our speakers tonight will, I'm sure, disagree with me, but I continue to have issues with having a mixed-use zoning that doesn't require mixed use. To me, I think we're opening, that's not necessarily good planning. If there's something that we want to have in a zoning district, that's why you have a zoning district, is to get the use that you want to have. I think that, in fact, we're leaving ourselves open to basically no zoning, because in a mixed-use district, the way we have it currently set up, you are allowing developers to come in and put anything from, or leave, I should say even, a single-family residential all the way up to, in some areas, a 90-foot-tall building, and you really have no idea what's going to go in there. The planner can come to you and say, or the developer, I'm sorry, can come to you and say, I'm going to put in a single-family residential, I'm going to leave a single-family residential on this plot of land, and the next thing you know, you've actually got a three-story building on that spot, and you have no way of controlling that. And the neighbors have no way of knowing that that's going to happen to them. So I won't vote against it, but that is a major concern of mine.
Alan?
As John and Sarah know, I generally share the concerns about that sort of mandatory language about requiring mixed use not being in there. But that set aside, I'm very much in favor of what's been said here today. The outreach to the neighbors adjacent to the areas in particular, I think, is particularly commendable, as someone who lives just a few blocks away from 38th, where the mixed-use neighborhood zoning might be applied. The idea of what some might say, more generous setback, is very attractive. The fact that the zoning is sensitive to the residential neighborhoods that are adjacent to these areas, I think, is commendable. The walkability aspect, the aspect of just making not just the plots of land that will be zoned mixed use, but adjacent to it, creating a more complete neighborhood around the mixed-use area, I think is really what this zoning is all about. It's about creating destinations for the nearby communities and not just necessarily the people who might, say, be living within the mixed-use zone. You know, adhering to the city charter height restrictions in mixed-use neighborhood, I think, is a really great move to retain that sort of character that Wheat Ridge has on some of those neighborhood main streets, such as 38th, especially that four-story max. The residential transitions with the buffer and setbacks, I think that's all great, and I'm looking forward to seeing developments put this in action, hopefully sooner rather than later.
George?
Thank you. I don't have anything dramatically different to say. I really do want to repeat the thanks to everyone who has put, obviously, a tremendous amount of time. I know sitting here and going through a couple of study sessions and reviewing the documents is small compared to the amount of people who've been involved in it and the amount of time that they've put into it and the amount of passion, and that's, you know, really nice to see. I moved to Wheat Ridge just a few doors off of 38th and dreamed about some of the things that I would hope that would happen in this community and on these corridors that we're talking about, and I do believe that this is a beginning to see that. And I think it's been said here already three times, this is a balance, and I think it's an appropriate balance, but as a balance, it's not a static thing. I hope it won't be a static thing, obviously, that this is, you know, and someone mentioned it about, you know, there is a transition between the codification of this and the practical application of this, and certainly, there's going to be a lot of things that maybe aren't perfect, and as we move forward and understand how to work, continue to maintain a balance, the line may change. It sounds like there's dedication from the staff and the residents and the stakeholders and the volunteers, even outside of our community, who want to do this. That leads me to believe that we'll be able to actively find that balance moving forward. So I am, you know, happy to vote in support of this.
Dean?
Yeah, I think it would be a disservice not to vote for this and support it. I think the one thing I would like to see is it broke up in a little bit smaller chunks when it goes to city council, just due to the massiveness of this, because I don't know if that ability is there to digest this document fully in one big chunk. It's kind of like a budget, you know? I mean, you can take each department, and yeah, you kind of understand that, but when you get the whole budget, you go, wow. It's kind of overwhelming. So, and you were going to say something?
Well, I think that's a great point, and along those lines, we did have a study session with city council in June, and gave them a great, we haven't made many content changes since then at all, and had a pretty extensive conversation on all of these topics, and gave them a preview draft, so that when, in hopes that when the final ordinance came, it wouldn't be this case of, oh, my gosh, this is so much information to process, so...
I think the one comment that I didn't comment on was making a nonconforming use worse. And I guess if it's nonconforming, it's nonconforming. I mean, how much worse can it get? It's already nonconforming.
Oh, that's for structures, not for uses?
Right.
So if...
That's what I mean. How much uglier can it get? You're going to make it uglier? I mean, I just didn't, I found that to be interesting. Okay.
Well, I'm happy to clarify, because I think it does have a, we actually thought pretty hard about that one. The best, one great example I can think of is we have build-two requirements so that a certain percentage of your lot is, the front of it has a building on it. So you have an existing building that's completely set back and only has a large parking lot in front. That would be a nonconforming structure. You can add on to it, as long as you don't make the nonconformity even worse, make the setback even worse. Transparency is another example. If you're not meeting, if you don't have enough windows, if your addition makes the transparency ratio even less, then you'd be making it worse. So we're trying to make sure that you're either, at the very least, maintaining the existing quality or making it better.
I think the thing I see is that when you have those nonconforming buildings, and we've already adopted, as a city, we've adopted architectural standards and different elements like this here, so when somebody comes in and does that, I think somehow this needs to kick in and say, I mean, this eyesore can be fixed at this time and upgraded. I think that that's part of belonging to a great community. As you want to participate in it, you upgrade your building as you develop it and stuff like that, not just make it less impactful or less conforming, is that. But I do want to thank staff. I want to thank all of the people who devoted so much of their personal time to putting this concept together in a form that the average citizen can understand. I think that's one thing that happens so many times, is that the citizen kind of goes, geez, you know, this is just overwhelming. But when you break it down into small segments and you deal with it like that, I think anyone that really cares for Wheat Ridge and wants it to become a place that has a potential to exist forever as a city would support this, because this is what we need as a city to develop. Those families that live here now, their kids need a place to live. They like Wheat Ridge, most of them, and they want to move back here. Well, you know, we don't have that new lifestyle facility here, but with this type of development, we would have that. And I think that's an important element we can phase into as a community and supply that type of environment for our kids and their kids in the future.
Thank you. Is that going to lead to a motion then?
Yes. Oh, I get to make the motion? Let me get back to the motion page. I move to recommend the approval of the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 26 concerning the creation of a mixed-zone district.
Sir, second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we need any additional discussion before I call for the vote? Call for the vote? Thank you.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you for everybody that participated in this process. And we are ready to go to the next thing on the agenda. Is there a study session tonight?
No.
Okay. Do you have other items?
I guess I'd just like to reiterate the thanks that have gone around to the task force who gratefully, from us, we really relied on their time and their expertise and made it a much better process. But I also want to thank the commission, who, you know, really, we appreciate how much you really delved into this, and as you always do, you know, took this seriously and did your homework and asked the right questions and made it the better document as well. And Sarah as well, who really has spent a lot of time both managing the project but also doing all the drafting and all the detail work as well. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Any matters from the commission? Otherwise, I could accept a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Offer of vote?
Unanimous.